Good evening. Welcome to the April 30th meeting of the Murfreesboro City School Board. We're thrilled to have as many of you with us tonight as possible and hope you'll stick around for a while.
A whole meeting.
Before we have our pledge of allegiance tonight, I would like during our moment of silence to remember a lady by the name of Mary Smith, who is a crossing guard at Irma Segal, who tripped yesterday, had hip surgery today. She's eighty-six years old and just a joy to be around. So we want to remember her during our moment of silence.
Absolutely.
But before that, our pledge tonight, be led by John Blanco, a third grade student at Mitchell Nelson, and his sister Regina, who is a kindergarten student at Mitchell Nelson Primary, along with another brother and sister, Scarlett Embry, a third grade student at Scales Elementary, and her brother Luke Embry, who is a kindergarten student at Scales. And at this time, I'm going to ask you to please stand as we have our pledge, followed by a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and infinite in its essence.
And now our moment of silence. All right, members of the board, you have received a copy of the agenda. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda as printed?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson. We have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Ballard. Any question or comment, Dr. Duke?
Yes, sir. We received some, item E, under action items, you will see, is the approval of the budget amendment for the FY24 consolidated funding application. We prepared that last week after receiving some new revenue projections from the state. We were informed yesterday that those would be changing again. So because that is a final for this year, I would like to request that the board remove that from the agenda so we could bring it back in May.
Is that a motion?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson and Mr. Richardson. Any question or comment for Dr. Duke? I see none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All in the opposed? Now do we have approval of the agenda as is now?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson. Have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Dodd. Any questions, comments? I see none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you. All right, communications. Ms. Trill?
Good evening, board.
Good evening.
Good evening.
We have a great crowd tonight, so we're going to be honoring them in just a second. But before we get to that, I wanted to say a few congratulations. First of all, to Overall Creek student Idrell Smith on winning the Read to Be, Spelling B, hosted by Read to Succeed, and he just blew it out of the top. So we are so proud of him and all the work he did to prepare for that reading, I mean, that spelling B. Our Science Olympiad was held on Saturday, April 27th, so it was last Saturday, at John Pittard. Want to congratulate everyone that participated, but do a real shout out to Northfield Elementary, who became the, they were the, actually the winners in the city, second runner-up for the overall competition. So congratulations, Northfield. Special Olympics, if you don't have that on your calendar, please go ahead and mark that for Monday, May 6th. Please join us at MTSU for the opening ceremonies and the competition, or you can join us at the schools prior to that as we do that Special Olympic send-off. It is special, and if you want to be brought to tears, join us at the schools before they ever get off, get on that bus.
What time is that ceremony at U.S.?
Ceremony is at 9:45. That's when they start the first rounds. We're also going to be celebrating next week all of the work and contributions of our retirees. So you're invited to lunch on May 7th. We're going to be honoring those retirees and wishing them well and hoping they come back, for sure. And MCS's Honor Band Concert is going on Monday, May 6th at 6:00 P.M., and that is at MTSU's Hinton Hall. So as typical for May, there are so many things going on. Right now, Hobgood is hosting their STEM night, so they have stuff, it's just in all the schools right now. We're so proud of everything and highlighting our students' work. The City Schools Foundation, we just finished our Excellence in Education Gala. Thank you for all of you that attended. It was a great success. We will be having new officers joining us beginning in June. Our officers for the 24-25 year will be, our chair will be Eric Mule, our past chair is David Scott, vice chair is Catherine Lehman, treasurer is Kevin Pascoe, and secretary is Tamara Gwynn. We have two new board members joining us, Kristen Rudy and David Mitchell as well. And one more final thing before I start with the wonderful show. Next week is Teacher Appreciation Week, so we want to make sure that all of our teachers know how appreciated they are. It is also Nurses Week, so we are going to be celebrating a lot of our teams next week. And that is your communication, sir.
Thank you, ma'am, very much. Good activities going on.
Okay. So if you don't mind, we'll just continue on and we'll do our MCS art winners. Dr. Duke, are you ready for that, too, you think?
Yes.
You're ready? I was just making sure we were good. So I am going to bring them up in front of the podium so you can all see them and their artwork, because I know you get to meet a lot of them in the rotunda, but just kind of putting that artwork with the face, we're going to try it a little different this time. So we are, do you want to announce the names?
Sure.
Okay. Just making sure and I'll get them in order. So we'll start with kindergarten.
All right, our kindergarten winners. Our honorable mention is Maria from Hobgood. In third place, Chanel from Bradley. In second place, Callie from Reeves Rogers. And our first place kindergarten is Chloe from Overall Creek. So congratulations, kindergarten. Come on up.
Come on up.
No, we have to go slower so we can get up here.
That's right.
All right. So first place winner right here.
Chloe, excellent job.
Hold that artwork up.
Okay, they've already gone up.
Okay, thank you.
I'm going to take a picture with Dr. Duke, okay?
You turn around.
Or that way.
Oh.
Do you show our board members your first place artwork?
I love it.
Very good.
Beautiful. Absolutely stunning.
We will, all right, so for first place, we will call up London, Antonia Kubele, and Rachel from Scales. So any of my first place winners, first grade winners that are here? Any first grade winners?
Where are they?
Come on up.
It's all first graders. It's all first grade winners.
There we go.
I'm going to put you right there in front so the board can see your artwork.
Oh, wow. I know.
In my mind, this one's so cute.
Wow. That's great.
The board can see it. Oh, there it is.
Excellent.
Beautiful.
Congratulations. Our first place winner was London and.
All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right, we'll try it this way. How about have any second graders in the audience with artwork? Do you have any second graders? Come on up, second graders with their artwork.
Where are they coming from?
Will come on up.
Oh.
There we go. Come on up. Excellent. Thank you. So these are our second place winners, and our honorable mention was Ava from Hobgood. In third place, Sharon from Hobgood. In second place, Serenity from Black Fox. And our first place winner in second grade is Edith from Black Fox. So congratulations. Thank you, ladies.
Good job. Thank you.
All right, let's have our third graders come on up. Any third graders with their artwork? There you go.
Yeah. Wow. Isn't that stunning? Isn't that incredible?
Our third graders?
Wow.
They're coming.
It took us a couple grades, but I think I got it figured out. Here we go.
Put them up here in front of the podium so their team can find you.
All right, our third grade honorable mention is Mackenzie from Bradley. In third place, Isaac from Black Fox. In second place, Ronaldo from Black Fox. And in first place for third grade, Erin from Salem Elementary. Congratulations. All right, let's have our fourth graders come on up.
There we go. Tell you what, that's some artwork.
There's some really good stuff.
Oh, wow.
Oh, wow.
Isn't that incredible? I didn't see that.
Much great artwork and pottery. Very impressive. In fourth grade, our honorable mention is Sandy. In third grade, we have Deacon from Scales. In second grade, I'm sorry, second place, Ben from Salem. And in first place, Aleah from Black Fox. Congratulations. And our fifth grade, do we have any fifth grade students here? Got a few coming up. Excellent. All right, congratulations to fifth grade. Our honorable mention is Ellie from Overall Creek. Third place is Sophia from Black Fox. Second place is Yang from Kason Lane. And first place is Kaylee from Reeves Rogers. Excellent. And finally, do we have any sixth graders here with their art? Perfect.
There we go. Oh, my.
For sixth grade, our honorable mention is Allison from Bradley. In third place is John from John Pittard. In second place is Nevea from Hobgood. And in first place is Grisdery from John Pittard. Congratulations. And I believe she's here, but our best in show, thank you, guys, our best in show for the entire show of all grade levels from Black Fox, Aleah Scales. This is our best in show for the entire art show. We're so proud of them. Like I said, this is our 34th art show, and the students do an unbelievable job, but at the end of the day, it's our art teachers who create these experiences for them. And I'll tell you, looking at Aleah's art from Black Fox, we had, those were hanging all over the school, and they all looked amazing. And so all of our art teachers did such a great job. So thank you, art teachers. How you make a difference, and we appreciate it.
Hey, Dr. Duke, I want to recognize the art teachers, because I don't know them all. Another gentleman over by the door.
Call them out.
So can I ask our art teachers to come up for me? All of our art teachers? Ms. Larson, you lead the way. We'll call our art teachers up, and I'll let them introduce themselves and what school they're at.
Yeah.
Good job, Chairman.
That is great.
Hi, my name is Campbell Bennett, and I teach at Bradley Academy.
Rock and roll.
Hi, I'm Sarah Larson, and I teach at Salem Elementary.
I'm Jesse Galliani. I teach at Irma Segal.
I'm George Popovich, 26 years at Kason Lane.
Sasha Burnett, the art teacher at John Pittard.
Yeah.
Rita Myers, and I'm at Overall Creek.
I'm Kim Garrett, and I teach at Black Fox Elementary.
In Anika, I teach at Scales Elementary.
I asked if they wanted to stay on camera, and they said no. So, but again, thank you to our art teachers and the great work they do.
I've never seen artwork like that, even from older kids. That's amazing.
I was going to ask, can I ask a question? That sixth grade first place winner, can you send, is that a self-portrait?
I love that.
That is, that's beautiful. Gosh.
It is absolutely mind-blowing and stunning.
I mean, I guess because I can't draw anything. And the art teachers, I was going to ask, how many of you cheated and helped all your kids draw? No, I'm joking.
That did not happen, Mr.
I know it didn't happen, but I was going to, I'm saying that because I went to, where were we? We were at a music concert at Scales, and it blew me away. And then the art that I'm seeing, and I'm so impressed with what we're doing and what we're able to do, what we allow to happen at Murfreesboro City Schools with very active arts, teaching and the music and all of that. It's so important. And I'm just putting a plug in because a lot of people don't realize that the arts are an essential part of the development of children. It helps them to be more well-rounded, and one of my hashtags was that music heals and music teaches, because it kind of goes into every aspect of your future learning. And the art thing, wow, I just, I wish I'd been better at art, but I'm not, but you guys did great. Thank you for showing us your work.
All right, the best of MCS?
Yes, sir. We actually have, and we know we've had a couple weeks because of budget meetings since we've been here, so if the board will indulge us tonight, we have three best of MCSs, and we're excited to announce those. And I'm going to start by introducing Ms. Quinina Bell, our principal from Hobgood, who's going to introduce you to our first best of MCS reckoning, or honorary for tonight.
Good evening, board.
Good evening.
So we all know that literacy is a foundation of success, so I have a wonderful third grade student, Ms. Kendall Sane, has released a book. She released a book this spring, 2004, and with that book, she's inspired many other students and adults. And so with that being said, she has been honored, not only by Mayor McFarland, but also Governor Bill Lee. So I want to welcome up Ms. Kendall Sane. We are so proud of her. And basically, I want to congratulate her and let her know we are so proud of what she does, and she is the best of MCS. The title of her book is A Rainy Day, and so it will be released shortly and sold on Amazon as well.
Beautiful.
Very nice.
Congratulations.
Ready to get a quick picture?
Beautiful.
That is great.
So we're so proud of Kendall and the work she did in this recognition, and in fact, thanks to City TV, they did a spotlight on her as well, so maybe you saw her there. So all the recognition she deserves for working so hard and for being a published author. Kendall, you're in what grade, remind me? Third grade, published author, right there. So we're so proud. Our next best of MCS, I'm going to ask Ms. Robin Newell to come on up to the podium and to introduce one of her educators.
Good evening, board.
Good evening.
It is my honor to introduce you to Codyanna Frye. She is one of several amazing pre-K EAs in our district, and we have EAs in every grade level from kindergarten to sixth grade, but the pre-K EAs are required to go above and beyond for professional development that you may not know about. And I told, or I asked Dr. Duke, when my next person got this, we were going to come in front of the school board and celebrate this, because it's really special. So each year, the state requires that voluntary pre-K educational assistants get what's called a CDA, and that's a Childhood Development Associate credential, and it's the most recognized credential in early childhood, and it's based on a core set of competency standards that guides our work with young children. So to get this credential, EAs, if she had gotten a job as an EA in kindergarten, she'd only have to get 12 hours of professional development every year, but she is required to get 130 training hours on top of 480 classroom hours. And so the state gives you two years to do that. So Codyanna did it.
Wow.
And got her CPR certification, and then TACTA, and I have to look this up because I didn't even know this, Tennessee Early Childhood Training Alliance certification, which is another 30 hours, and she did it all in eight months.
Oh, good.
I want you to know that, and.
Wow.
All of the voluntary pre-K EAs in our district have to do that. So she set a record in getting her so quickly, and I just want you to know how hard they work, and especially how hard she's worked.
Absolutely.
Wow. Very much.
Incredible.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Here she comes. We got to get your picture. All of our staff work so hard, our EAs as well, and so we want to thank them. We have one more best of MCS tonight, and so I'm going to ask Ms. Lauren Fleuharty to join me at the podium as well. And I am beyond thrilled to, with all of this, to recognize again the accomplishments of our employees, but our final recognition tonight goes to Ms. Lauren Fleuharty, who teaches sixth grade at Discovery School. Lauren is in her 16th year of education, and she's been with Murfreesboro City Schools for the past two years. And we are so excited to say, and you heard me say it on Friday if you were at the event, that Ms. Fleuharty has been named a state finalist for the Presidential Award for Excellence in Math and Science Teaching. And let me just say, this is a very big deal. The Presidential Awards are the highest honors bestowed by the United States government specifically for K-12 math and science teachers. The award recognizes those teachers that have both deep content knowledge of the subjects they teach and the ability to motivate and enable their students to be successful. Awardees reflect the expertise and the dedication of the nation's teaching corps, and they demonstrate the positive impact of excellent teaching on student achievement. We are not at all surprised by this recognition, although we are proud. Her principal, Dr. Bullard, nominated her for this honor, and she could not be here tonight due to another scheduling issue, but this is what Dr. Bullard told me. She said, "Lauren is an exceptional educator who exemplifies not only the characteristics of an effective teacher, but also the traits that we hope to model for our students." This includes collaboration, self-reflection, and a commitment to lifelong learning. From writing a grant designed to transform math instruction across all classrooms at Discovery School, to leading book studies and team building, to enrolling in postgraduate work, Ms. Fleuharty takes initiative and seeks to create opportunities to better herself and our school district. She is an innovative and dedicated leader, and everyone she works with, both students and colleagues, are better off because of her. I asked Lauren, you know, what is it that keeps you motivated and keeps you focused every day? And I love what she told me. She said, "I ultimately stay for the relationships with the kids. I love being able to walk through life with them. Yes, I want them to learn and grow academically, but more than that, I want them to know that they always have someone in their corner, no matter what. They challenge me and make me want to be better every single day, and on the days when I'm not my best, they still leave with a smile, tell me to have a good afternoon, and come back the next day." And I love this. So as long as they continue to show up for me, I'll continue to show up for them. And that is why Lauren Fleuharty is an amazing educator. So Lauren, thank you for what you do, and thank you for representing the best of MCS.
I didn't really have anything prepared, but when I got the email over spring break that I was going to be recognized, or that I had been chosen as a finalist, I was shocked and very humbled. I just hope that I make you guys proud. As you can see, there's so many fabulous things that are going on in our city, and I'm just honored to represent our city, and I hope that when people see the things that are going on and see this award, I really hope that it speaks more than just to me and the classroom, but I hope it really speaks to all of the things that are going on in our city. And thank you, guys, for everything that you do for the students and teachers as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, Ms. Kendall, before you leave, if you need a literary agent, there are two good lawyers up here. Just reach out, we'd be happy to help.
Three.
No, no, there's a, there's a great one, too.
Two good ones.
Congratulations.
Two good ones and a great one. Well, two good ones make it greater.
Did you also do the illustrations in that book?
Oh, my goodness.
Did you do the illustrations?
No.
That doesn't matter if you wrote it.
Very good job. Congratulations.
You know, how in the world could anybody, anybody, go anywhere to school except Murfreesboro City after tonight?
I don't understand.
Why would you want to go to? I'll be quiet. Yes, Lauren, I got the look. All right, we ready for public comment?
Yes, sir, and there's no public comment tonight.
No public comment. Very good. Okay. Consent items. Members of the board, you've had an opportunity to look at the consent items. Have a motion to approve the consent items as printed?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. Have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Long. Any question or comment? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Man, things got quiet in here.
They all left us.
Action items. Dr. Duke?
Yes, sir. Our first action item tonight is the approval of a budget amendment for the ESER 3.0 grant. We reviewed this as well during our budget meetings earlier this month, but you have a budget amendment for our ESER 3.0 funding source. This amendment increases the award amount by $230,998 due to new funds that were released by the State Department just a few days ago. Additionally, it reallocates $513,040 from extended contracts, substitutes, and building improvements due to savings and unspent funds in those line items. The increase in reallocation funds will be used for professional development, stipends, instructional supplies material, wages and salaries for academic interventionists, and a mobile resource lab. This total amendment of $744,038 will allow the district to fully allocate all funds before the federal deadline this September, and we are recommending approval as presented.
Thank you, sir. We have a motion to accept the budget amendment for ESER 3.0?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Dodd. Second, Ms. Long. All in, any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? There is none. Thank you. Homeless?
Yes, sir. Our next is the American Rescue Plan Homeless 2.0 Budget Amendment. This amendment decreases the award amount by $143.75 due to a decrease in the award from the State Department. And I will say, that's not uncommon, terribly, you'll see several of these tonight where they always talk, they give us preliminary allocations, and then toward the end of the program, they will give us final allocations, and sometimes those are small increases, sometimes they're decreases. Here, it's a decrease of $143.75. These funds were removed from the. preliminary allocations to actual allocations for this current year's FY24 IDEA Special Education Funding Application. This includes an increase in IDA Part B funds of $156,136, and an increase in IDEA preschool funds of $4,133, for a total increase in revenues and corresponding expenditures of And to kind of compare that to the ARP Homeless Grant we looked at earlier, this is again where they just do those final allocations. In this case, our final allocation went up, so we'll work to get that money expended. But we are recommending approval and are happy to answer any questions you may have.
Move for approval, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Ms. Suddles. We have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. Any question or comment? I see none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you. Approval of budget amendment?
That is the item we pulled from the agenda, so I think we're ready for the banking services one.
Okay. Contract Banking Services.
Pursuant to statutory law, Murfreesboro City Schools is seeking approval of the following banks as depositories of city school funds through execution of agreements. That's Pinnacle Financial Partners, Wilson Bank and Trust, and Truist Bank. The school district is using proposals that were submitted to the city of Murfreesboro through a request for proposal process that was approved by city council on September 14th. This agreement will allow MCS to solicit these banks for interest rates that will best maximize our deposited funds, and we are recommending approval of the contract as presented.
We have a motion to approve the contract banking services.
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Long. We have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Dodd. Any question or comment? I see none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you. Approval of budget amendment?
That is the item we pulled from the agenda, so I think we're ready for the banking services one.
Okay. Contract Banking Services.
Pursuant to statutory law, Murfreesboro City Schools is seeking approval of the following banks as depositories of city school funds through execution of agreements. That's Pinnacle Financial Partners, Wilson Bank and Trust, and Truist Bank. The school district is using proposals that were submitted to the city of Murfreesboro through a request for proposal process that was approved by city council on September 14th. This agreement will allow MCS to solicit these banks for interest rates that will best maximize our deposited funds, and we are recommending approval of the contract as presented.
We have a motion to approve the contract banking services.
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Long. We have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. Any question or comment? I see none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you. Approval of budget amendment?
That is the item we pulled from the agenda, so I think we're ready for the banking services one.
Okay. Contract Banking Services.
Pursuant to statutory law, Murfreesboro City Schools is seeking approval of the following banks as depositories of city school funds through execution of agreements. That's Pinnacle Financial Partners, Wilson Bank and Trust, and Truist Bank. The school district is using proposals that were submitted to the city of Murfreesboro through a request for proposal process that was approved by city council on September 14th. This agreement will allow MCS to solicit these banks for interest rates that will best maximize our deposited funds, and we are recommending approval of the contract as presented.
We have a motion to approve the contract banking services.
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Long. We have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Dodd. Any question or comment?
I have a question.
Mr. Suddles?
Is this a change in location, or is this something that we just do periodically?
So we do want to periodically make sure we are bidding out and looking at banking services. In this situation, we...piggyback is maybe the best word to say, off with the city in the bid they did. Moving forward, we have the option to do it ourselves and bid it ourselves, but for this one, we decided to piggyback off the city so we can look at those options.
No further questions.
Any other questions? We have a motion and a second. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you. Approval of contract for sport court for Discovery School?
Yes, sir. We are seeking to resurface and install sports tiles on the current tennis courts at Discovery School, similar to what was done last year at Casey Lane in Armistice Eagle. This agreement with Browning Chapman LLC is pursuant to a Sourcewell Agreement and will be funded by the Project Diabetes Grant, which was previously accepted by the school district, as well as interest earned on county shared bonds. As I mentioned, this is the second year of the three-year Project Diabetes Grant Award, and so once Discovery School gets finished this year, next year, we will move to our final two tennis courts in the district, which will be at Mitchell Nielsen and Reeves Rogers. I will say, before the board approves it, the work that's been done at Casey Lane and Armistice Eagle, I will say, from anecdotally, has been hugely successful. I drive by Casey Lane often on the weekends, and I don't know if I've driven by Casey Lane since it's been nice outside that that basketball and tennis court is not crawling with students from the community playing basketball. It's a great addition to our school and our community as a whole.
We have a motion to approve the contract.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Ms. Ritzman. We have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Ballard. Any question or comment? I notice we're reducing the size, not by a whole lot, by 44 feet or something like that. Would I, Mr. Barge?
I'm going to turn that over to Mr. Barge.
Good evening, Board.
Good evening.
We're reducing on the west side towards the train tracks. It's all tree root damage. And so just eliminating a little bit of that, and then the fence, they'll take that out. It'll become grass, and the shorter part is where the rest of this sport court will go on. And then a fence, a new fence all the way around.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you. 20...23, 24 summer school budget?
Yes, sir. This amendment budgets the new summer learning and transportation grants in the general purpose school funds. These new revenues and expenditures are awarded by the Department of Education to pay for the June 2024 summer learning program. It will have no effect on our general purpose fund balance. The $1,779,702 summer learning grant that's posted in your board packet will fund salaries for teachers, assistants, nurses, crossing guards, administrative staff, and clerical staff. Additionally, the grant funds will be used for instructional materials and supplies for our summer school program. In addition, we have funds allocated for the transportation grant, which will fund salaries for the bus drivers and transportation staff, as well as gasoline for our buses during the summer. The total amount of the grant as posted in your packet is $1,954,183 to be used for the program.
We have a motion to approve the summer school budget?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Long. We have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Dodd. Any questions or comments?
Yes, sir. I will jump in here as well now that it's open for discussion. We received information late yesterday from the state regarding this, and we had already posted everything in the packet, and because we were within 48 hours of the meeting, we did not want to change the agenda. But you'll have it in your packet to...you have it somewhere in the stack of very...the very large stack of papers you were left today. You have an email from Becky Sally in our finance department, as well as an amended budget amendment that we will add to the packet should the board approve it tonight. This does two things that we learned yesterday. One, it gives us an additional $172,000 for transportation. The original allocation they gave was significantly less than what we had got in the past. Several school systems reached out about that, and they did add more money to that transportation. So we got that yesterday. It recognizes those new funds. And it also takes the funds, the instructional material and supply funds. We have historically put that in one line item under one big banner for instructional materials and supplies. And the state has requested this year that we actually break those up into different categories depending on what we're purchasing with that, whether it's consumable, whether it's a non-consumable item. So what this amendment in front of you does, and what I would ask the board to do tonight, is to have a board member make a motion to approve the amended budget, if possible, that will recognize those new funds and allow us to put the money in the correct line item. Typically, in this situation, we would pull the item from the agenda, bring it back in May. This does have to go before city council. We just received this allocation, I believe, last week. Is that correct, Sherri? So we've been moving very quickly because summer school, believe it or not, is about three and a half weeks. So we want to make sure we can buy things, and so that's what we're asking for the board if they would consider amending what's been presented tonight and approving the amended budget.
All right. Do we have a motion to amend what Dr. Duke has explained?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Ms. Ritzman. We have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. Any question or comment?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Are these recategorizations problematic for our finance team, or is it maybe more transparent?
No, it's not problematic. It's not problematic at all. I'll be honest, it's just a change in practice for this specific grant for what we have done in the past. And so I appreciate you asking that, but it is not an issue for our team at all.
Excellent. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I have a question, but it's procedural. What do we do with the motion that we started acting on, Lauren?
It would be an amended motion, so that would be okay. You can just vote on the amendment. Well, you would need to...
We haven't dealt with the original motion. Do we need...we deal with the amendment first and then go back to the original?
No, it would...you would need to make a motion to approve the budget as amended. The budget amendment as amended?
That's what the motion was. We are approving the amended budget?
That's correct.
If it's approved?
Yes.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
I believe Ms. Moore may have had a question.
Yeah, just a quick...just clarification. That's okay. So all this is, is an addition. Some is reallocation, and some is an addition of funds. None of this is lowering the funds.
Absolutely. So, and the state actually has it as multiple grants that they roll into one. The two main ones is the actual summer learning program, which is going to pay for teachers, their salaries, the instructional part, no change to that at all, except moving it from the instructional materials and supplies into other instructional materials and supplies, and changing that. The addition is specifically toward the transportation grant, which they gave us additional money for transportation.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I'll learn better.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you.
I do believe Ms. Arnett is breathing a sigh of relief back there.
Good. Good.
Can you do what you need to do with this?
Wonderful.
Approval of the 24, 25 general purpose budget?
Yes, and we are excited tonight to bring the 24, 25 budget to the board for your approval. Before you approve it, I am going to do just a quick presentation for our viewing audience as well, for those who...if I can get this to work. There we go. For our viewing audience at home, because as so much has gone into this budget, and I want to thank the board for the really in-depth work they've done over all of our budget work sessions on this, as well as our finance team, Mr. Owens and Beth have done a great job pulling this together. And not just them, but all of our department heads who have worked so hard to make sure that we have a budget that really speaks to the priorities of the district. So just as a quick highlight, obviously, when we think about our budget, it's always aligned to the mission and vision of our district, and that's to make sure that we are preparing our students both academically and personally, and we think the budget speaks to that. We also believe that our budget very much aligns to our five-year strategic plan that the board has adopted to make sure that we are meeting those key targets that the board has laid out and asked us to focus on. For our viewing public, you know, how did we get here? Of course, we've had department head meetings, we've had principal feedback meetings, we've had feedback from our teacher advisory council, we've received parent input. All of that has gone into the draft budget. And again, the board is very aware, y'all have sat through now two four-hour budget workshops where you've provided both direction and feedback for us. And with that feedback, we are proud to present the budget we have tonight. Our budget goals, again, to make sure that we're maximizing outcomes for our students, that we're retaining and recruiting our personnel by offering competitive salaries and benefits, that we're looking at all of our funding sources that we're going to approve tonight, and then again, addressing those needs while also keeping a strong fund balance as we work toward the future. Our budget priorities that we looked at this year was to, one, make sure we maintained our behavioral supports the board put in place last year that continue to be a very high priority, as well as the transition of our ESAR-funded positions and cost of living adjustments. And we've talked specifically about our most seasoned educators, our veteran educators with the most experience, making sure that we're remaining competitive at those pay lanes as well. When we look at our projection of students, we are projecting roughly 9,278 students next year. That's about a 2.6% growth. And so all of this that you'll see in the budget tonight does prepare for that. And John, if you'll give me just a second, I need to make sure that we are looking at the right slides. There we go. Thank you. The major piece in addition to the growth positions, with that 2.6% growth, we do have roughly 18 growth positions in the budget. That includes not only growth teaching positions, but a new assistant principal, some new special education staff, some additional ESL staff, as well as some additional gifted teachers, additional gifted teacher as well for our gifted students. So a lot of additional staff to handle that growth. We know that the major part of our budget really comes down to salaries, and because roughly about 88% of our budget is made up of salaries of the people we pay, I tell people all the time, we are an organization of people. That's what we pay for, and that's what your tax dollars pay for, because we know there's nothing better for students than to put a well-trained individual in front of them every day. So the budget that our board has looked at approving includes a base 3% cost of living adjustment to the teacher salary schedule with additional adjustments in years 16 through 25 to make sure we also remain competitive in those lanes. And we know, last year specifically, that was an area where we...one of the areas we were not as competitive. So that base 3% with additional dollars added in years 16 through 25 where needed. For all of our employees who are not on the teacher salary scale, a 4% cost of living adjustment has been made. And I do want to clarify that because I know we've had conversations about maybe it being a little odd to see that 3% for certified, 4% for classified. The reason we made that is when we added the additional dollars in years 16 through 25, that really took the average for the teacher at that 4% as well. So it just looks a little different on the salary scale. I'll also say that our teacher salary scale does recognize years of experience up to year 25, whereas our classified employees, if they're on a salary step scale, it only goes to year nine. And then we have many classified employees who are not on a salary step scale. So this really kind of evens out in making sure that we're taking care of all of our employees as we look at that. But we feel very confident that this increase will continue to keep us competitive to other school districts in the area. We do have a new salary scale specifically for school bus drivers, school nurses, and school social workers, again, to make sure we're competitive in those areas. And we will continue with our differentiated pay plan for our hard-to-staff positions. And this year, we're proud to also offer, and the board will approve tonight hopefully, a placement bonus for all of our new teachers who complete residency to, or what's formerly known as student teaching, with MCS. So, with, as a whole, what we're looking at for our general purpose budget is we are looking at projected revenues of $107,633,849, which is about a 5.2% increase from last year, where our revenues were right over $102 million. Our expenditures this year, we're projecting right now $112,419,127, which is a 5.6% increase. And this does pull $4.7 million, or a little more than $4.7 million, from our fund balance. I do know that that number may raise a few eyebrows, but we talked about that extensively in our budget work session. I've also had conversations with city staff regarding that as well in my meetings with them. What we do know is the board has worked really hard the last few years to build that fund balance. We are in a very good place with that fund balance, and we feel very comfortable with that. One, because of where we're sitting with that fund balance, and two, because we always work hard to project those revenues conservatively. And so, we are feeling good with that. So, again, there you can see those numbers. And with that, I will pause, and I will say you have the complete 2425 GP budget in front of you, and we are recommending approval as presented.
We have a motion to approve the 2425 budget.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson. We have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Ballard. Now, we have questions. Mr. Ballard.
Comment. I just think it's important for the... All members and the public also to understand that that $4.7 million out of the reserve is not deficit spending.
Yes.
It's money that we've allocated properly going forward to be able to have a balance that we can pull from if we need it. So, I just... First look, it looks like, oh, well, we're going to be spending more than we've got. And that's not the case.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Richardson?
I've heard Ms. Moore and I've heard Dr. Duke say it many times, a budget is a moral document. And I believe that this budget reflects the morals and the ethos of the city of Murfreesboro. I believe it shows an equitable distribution of funds. I believe this budget reflects something that is reasonable and necessary to continue to have insured academic excellence success moving forward in Murfreesboro City schools. And I'm very, very proud of the team in finance and all the department heads and everyone that's come together to make a budget that reflects who we are and what we value. We can put our money where our mouth is and make sure that our teachers, our educators, our EA, our staff, and our students are getting the very best. The best of MCS is reflected in this document. I'm very, very proud of this budget.
Any other comments? We have a motion and we have a second. We've had comment. Are we ready to vote?
Yeah.
All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And note that there is none. Thank you, sir. Thank you for the staff, for everybody that has worked. And I know it's been a long process. We certainly do appreciate the hard work that everyone has done getting us ready for this budget. All right, approval now of the 2425 federal consolidated budget.
Yes, sir. And on your screens in front of you, we will review the federal funds budget. The GP budget, of course, is our big one, but our federal funds are extremely important to us as well, to the work we do. So, in front of you, you have an overview of our federal funds budget. You can see in Title I, with consolidated admin, it's a budget of $1,901,575. In Title II, it's $470,395. Title III is $140,667. Our special education IDAB grant is $1,889,35. Our pre-K special education grant from the federal government is $49,945. For our preliminary funding allocation for federal funds for our block grant next year of $4,545,490. Pardon that small error. And we are recommending approval of this as presented as well.
Do we have a motion to approve the federal funds Title IDA budget?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Ms. Settles. We have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Dodd. Now, we have questions or comments. I see none. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you. Extended schools budget, program budget, ESP budget.
Yes, our third budget for next year. I have a summary on the screen in front of you. Again, for those watching at home, we've gone over these in-depth in our budget meetings. But you can see for 2425, for our ESP before and after-school program, we are budgeting expected revenues of $5,662,810. That is actually a decrease in revenues from last year, and part of that is because we are officially moving away from all of the COVID-era funding that we've had for the last three years, and that included some child stabilization grants in our ESP program as well. Expenditures at $6,74730. That's a 13% decrease. And again, that is related to that decrease in grant funding and decrease in expenditures, pulling from our reserves, and budgeting from the reserves at $411,000. And you can see down at the bottom, they are sitting at a fund balance of over $6.6 million in ESP. So, very comfortable with that number as well. And we are recommending approval as presented of our ESP budget.
We have a motion to approve the ESP budget.
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. We have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Long. Any question or comment?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
So, the FY '23 and the FY '22 fund balance, that's a lot of difference there. What... I'm just curious, what gave us that extra?
The child stabilization grants that came through the American Rescue Plan with COVID money was a big contributor of that. That we were able to reimburse quite a bit of money to our program with that, and then also able to cut some costs for summer. But those were two very substantial. I think one was $2.6 million, and another one was a little over $2 million as well. So, they were pretty substantial grants that came. If you remember, those were the grants that also required, we gave bonuses to the workers, and we did all that as well. But we had that with our regular revenues and expenditures, and that was a big contributor to that.
Yeah, that's nice. That's nice. Thank you.
Ms. Settles?
Is there a requirement on fund balance for the ESP as well?
There is not.
There's not? We just do that because we are smart?
Yeah, and again, just in...
Or you are.
Well, just in complete transparency, specifically with this one, those two child stabilization grants played a big, big component in that, because they were ones that we were not really expecting.
Right.
Whereas the ESAR dollars, we were expecting, we really planned out multiple years for that. These were not as... We did not have as much forewarning that we were going to get these, or in this case, really great warning we were going to get these. And so, we did not build them into our regular budget. They were treated more as amendments.
So, that ESP budget is separate from GP?
It is separate.
Also has a fund balance?
It does.
Thank you.
Other questions? All in favor of the motion to approve the extended school program budget, say aye.
Aye.
Opposition? There is none. Thank you. School nutrition budget.
Yes, our school nutrition budget is presented as well. An overview here of our school nutrition budget on your screen. I think it is. Yep, there you go. You will see on the screen for 2425, we are projecting revenues of $6.4 million in our school nutrition funds. That is an increase over last year for revenues. You'll also see our expenditures at $8.7 million, which is a little bit of a decrease in expenditures, pulling $2.2 million for fund balance. I do want to point out specifically here that that is a very intentional move. So, if you look down there at the FY '22, '23, the fund balance, we're sitting at about $7 million. This is one of those funds where we do have a requirement for fund balance, but it's actually kind of the opposite of what we're used to. Instead of having a minimum, they want us to have a maximum. They do not. We do not want to hold a large fund balance there, and they ask us to only hold roughly about three months' worth of expenses there. Again, because of some of the COVID grants and looking at that, that's higher than that three months expenditure. So, part of those expenditures being so much more than the revenues we're projecting is to help spend down that money. And we're recommending approval as presented.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Ms. Settles. We have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Ballard. Any question or comment?
Just a shout-out of the farm-to-school program.
That's right.
Yeah, it's amazing.
Very good. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposition? There is none. Thank you. Debt services.
Yes, sir. Give me just a moment. Yes, sir. The 2425 debt service budget is being presented to the board for approval. The debt services fund is used to account for funds reserved for the retirement of the district's debt. The debt is held by the city of Murfreesboro on behalf of the school system. The expense of the debt service funds include principal and interest payments for bond and loan indebtedness for city schools property. The principal and interest is backed by the full faith and credit and taxing power of the city of Murfreesboro. And our school board recognizes these funds, and then they're also recognized for city council, because again, the city of schools are not allowed to hold debt. So, the city of Murfreesboro holds that on our behalf. And this is a budget we approve each year before going to city council, and we are recommending approval as presented.
I have a motion to approve the 2425 debt services budget.
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Long. We have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Dodd. Any question or comment?
I have a question. Just a clarification. We don't really control this at all, right?
Yes, absolutely. That's really controlled by the city, but they want us to show it both on our books and their books as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposition? There is none. Thank you. Revenue and expenditure report.
Good evening, council members.
Good evening.
Good evening, sir.
Sorry, we got to hear about revenues and budgets any longer. That symbolizes what Trey's going to be done with us after tonight. So, you got our report. One good signal this month is we are in the black, not in the red finally. So, that's always exciting. If you turn to our revenue page, one big highlight I would like to point out is our current sales tax. It's at $10 million. That is two months behind. Current projections put us on pace for $17.6 million, which is still over what we're budgeting for this upcoming fiscal year. So, that's a big highlight. Outside of that, we're on good pace with our expenditures, and I'd be happy to entertain anything you have.
I don't know if...
Mr. Ballard?
Oh, I'm sorry. I've just started talking. I apologize.
This kind of goes back to the last topic, but in the case of the debt service, is that part of the annual audit that we have on Murfreesboro City School Funds?
Yes, so they will have audit, and that will be...
That'll be included in the total audit to take care of whether we're treating our debts right or our liabilities and such. Okay.
So, they'll do a crosswalk to match ours to the city's, and that's how they account for it.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Ms. Settles?
No, Wes kind of answered it. I was going to say, we normally don't know enough about the finance stuff to ask a question, but Wes did, so there goes that.
Any other questions? We need a motion to approve the revenue report. Do we have a motion to do so?
I'd like to make that motion.
Thank you, Ms. Settles. We have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Ballard. Any question or comment? I see none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. All right, thank you. Our reports and information, construction update.
Yeah, I've asked Mr. Barch to come. As we get ready for summer, obviously, there's going to be a lot of stuff going on in our schools in addition to the fact that we run a complete school program for the month of June. So, I asked Mr. Barch to provide the board an update on some of the major construction projects that we have going on this, in the next couple of months.
Good evening again. As you can see, we have several projects going on that are really exciting. Like I said, as you can see, the security upgrades are moving along, just as they're, as planned. And those will be completed soon. Can't go into specifics on those. Mitchell Nielsen Playground, that we just met on that yesterday, or last week. And that looks fantastic, and hopefully, that should be completed early, which is June 1st. And then they'll be revamping the old playground, pulling out the old playground by the street and repurposing some of it. So, and actually, for across the street for the primary. Reeves Rogers and the Hobgood HVAC systems are, we're actually waiting for the end of school so they can get in there and finish that work. The compressor central office is good. If you were around the central office last week, it was either really, really cold or really, really hot while they were replacing that. And that has been fixed to much people, many people's enjoyment. Central office flooring, which is another thing we're excited about, especially the instructional department, is going to be beginning in about 10 days. And we're just, I just talked with the city tile, and we're working on getting that ready to go and should be hopefully seamless. And Discovery School is also working on getting their flooring done in that kindergarten pod. And that's going to be the art room, or the music room, I'm sorry, music room and some other services. Just that whole pod is getting a new LVT. It's luxury vinyl tile. That's right. So, that's, everybody gets that now. Anyway, the Mitchell Nielsen interior paint, we're working on that so we can pull that off this summer. And either we get part of it done or all of it done, but we're working through that with different paint contractors. Hobgood Ceiling, that's a big project. Remember Mitchell Nielsen last summer? That's going to be, again, we're waiting for school to conclude, and they're actually going to hit Saturday morning. Kids leave Friday, they're coming in Saturday morning. So, there's, it's lots of planning. That's what's the fun part about my job. And we got a lot of planning going on, a lot of coordinating. It's kind of neat to see the subcontractors working on this and kind of, it's kind of like a concert, trying to get all this thing going. Casey Lane Pre-K is going to get a new parking lot in the driving part of it. And then, of course, the Reeves Rogers Annex is on pace to break around in early August. And then finally, there's one that's not on your list. I just wanted to talk about the Bradley administration. Teachers have been advocating for some fence work around their playgrounds, and that is, that is approved. And we're just waiting for the contractor to be able to get in there and do that on Martin Luther King Jr. Drive side and in the back there by the back of it. I can't think of the school.
Holloway.
Thank you. It just totally left me. Anyway, any questions?
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
The Mitchell Nielsen, when they pulled the Mitchell Nielsen Playground down in the front, the repurposing, is some of that going to be for parking, please? I mean...
Oh, that is something that has been entertained, but the repurposing, is the playground equipment going to be used across the...
Okay, you're going to repurpose the equipment?
Yes.
So, the space that's going to be created?
There's some conversation about that. We've actually, during this time with the playground, had discussions with the folks that I work with in the city about that. I don't know how soon, but it is a conversation.
And also, that's the ultimate goal, was to turn that into parking.
Yeah, because I was, that was my...
We just don't have that scoped out yet, and the project, that is, the goal is, once that's done and the playground is done, that we would repurpose that. It's very much needed there for additional parking.
Where's their bus lane? Is it in the front too, right there?
It's actually on the side of the building, behind the little... If I can just add, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, if that's okay.
Around by the, in front of the water tower.
Say it again.
Buses, don't they come in by the water tower?
Okay, yeah.
And if I can just say, if you see the list in your board packet, it's a pretty extensive list. And that's really because Mr. Barch is in the seat he's in. And I just want to throw it, he has been, and he has been incredibly active in working to get some of these projects off the ground and moving. A huge shout-out to our partners at the city of Murfreesboro. They meet with Mr. Barch, I think, every other week?
Well, right now, it's once a month, but we'll kick it up.
Kick it up. So, they're...
We just met today.
They're meeting all the time to make sure that these projects keep moving. As you know, anytime you're working through contracts with state dollars and you're working on things, there's always that potential of a lot of red tape you have to get through, and he's done a great job with that. I'm really excited about what's happening at Mitchell Nielsen. We've been focused on that school, really, I feel like, since I've got here. Started with a brand-new roof, then a brand-new ceiling, now a brand-new playground. Last year, the entire inside of the primary school, we painted that. This year, well, now that the exterior of the elementary school is done with the roof and ceiling, we'll be able to start tackling the paint inside of that. So, a lot of great work happening in that building specifically. So, I just want to give a huge shout-out to Don and his team for just doing what it takes to help our principals and doing what it takes to make sure our schools are taken care of. And he doesn't let obstacles stand in his way. So, thank you, Don.
A lot of help.
For a job well done.
Yeah, absolutely.
Ms. Barch, I have a question.
Just kidding.
I'm assuming that summer school is not going to interrupt any of this, or this is not going to interrupt summer school?
That's part of that concert.
That's right.
That's right.
That balancing act.
That whole team of working together, it's been fantastic. Lots of fun. We got it worked out. It goes to the collaboration, that central office, principals, everybody. It's amazing. We got, we got a team.
That's great. Thank you. Yeah. Ms. Campbell, I have a question. So, when did you say the fence at Bradley was going to be?
That's, now we're just beholden to the contractor, to whenever they can get it in their schedule.
Okay, I didn't know.
It's past the approval stages, ready to go.
Okay.
We're just waiting on that.
I was over there the other day. It's needed.
Yep, it's coming.
And I know, like, a year ago, we had to do some repairs over there. Here's part of it on the Martin Luther King Boulevard. It had completely fell down, and I think that's when I first came on the board. But, yeah, I, that's, I'm glad that we're doing that, because now that you bring it up, I'm like, yes, they do need that desperately.
Closing it all. It's being closed off. But there's going to be gates, but it's going to be closed off, not open. Closing it all, it's being closed off. But there's gonna be gates, but it's gonna be closed off, not open.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
I, I just want, I wanted to say that I'm, I'm kind of happy. I, I think that, uh, Mr. Barch is partially responsible for the supply chain issues that we had being resolved. I don't know how he did that. Um, but I am remembering back that when we were dealing with supply chain issues, uh, on a serious note, just a year or so ago, and a lot of our prices got kind of out of whack. Y'all remember that? And, and we were looking at, uh, two and three times more. So we're, we're still working kind of within our budget now with all the projects we have going on. So we, I, kudos to you and everybody else that has, makes that happen because I really, that was kind of a cringe type deal with the supply chain thing. Is Sandy still here? I was gonna ask her about food. Do, when, are we having food issues still? Like milk? I remember that was a big deal. We're doing okay now?
Milk is fine. We're still having some other food issues.
Okay.
Thanks, sir. Good report.
Thank you.
Enrollment report.
Good evening, board.
Good evening.
Good evening, sir.
There we go. So before you tonight, uh, we have those standard reports. This is a summary. Do apologize for the formatting on that, uh, one part. It's not quite centered. Um, looking at our, um, average daily attendance, we did drop just a little bit, just that point oh, point oh eight. So we are still in strong, uh, standing with a ninety-three point six percent. Our truancy rates, um, at this time of the year and till now, period nine and period eight, you'll see those numbers increase. Uh, but as you look at last year, we are still below that amount. Uh, we're still standing strong there. Our enrollment account, we have nine thousand four hundred and ninety-six students. From that last period, we're up by twenty-eight.
Wow.
If you look at that chronic, chronic absentee rate, again, that's excused and unexcused absences of, um, that we look at and there was no change at all, exact numbers. Had to go back and triple check that just to make sure, but nothing changed there. Is it, take a look, take a look at those PTR ratios. Uh, just slight changes you'll notice on the right there. And one of my favorite graphs to look at is just that year, as we look at week by week, just some of those comparisons. And again, this is just a little bit beyond that period seven, but this is where we've compared and we remain strong.
Mr. Rocha, I think that the blue, of course, is the current year and that one spike we just had, I think that was actually the eclipse day.
Uh, so that, that eight fifty-one is their spare weather and then when we look at the, uh, six, six eighty-one, that is the eclipse day.
Okay.
Just those two days, um, were the, were, were the spikes.
Thank you. Outliers.
Yes, outlier. I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman from A. Uh, how was attendance during our testing week?
I was gonna ask the same thing.
During what?
Testing week.
They were great.
Were they?
They, they were, they were great. We had kids in the building, uh, behaviors were down as well and we saw, uh, same with attendance.
I didn't know if teachers like bribing them with money or candy or stuff.
That's not something we can talk about.
Smart man.
Thanks, sir. Good report.
Thank you very much.
All right, let's see, where are we? Directors, no, personnel report.
Yes, sir. The personnel report is in your packet and we're happy to address any questions you may have on that, but it's standard report.
All right, director's report.
Yeah, it's just a couple of quick announcements. One, um, Mr. Suddles just referred to it, but we finished state testing last week. So, uh, we are, I'm incredibly optimistic about the work our teachers have done with our students this year. Um, and a huge shout out to Ms. Arnett and her team, specifically Dr. George, who heads up that and it is no small feat. Um, every morning he would send out a testing update and it was a very lengthy one. And, um, but there's a lot of ins and outs that goes into that to making it a successful testing experience. And I think Ms. Arnett would agree, it was incredibly successful, very few issues. Our teachers did a great job, administrators did a great job. And then our central office staff prepared them very well. So we're, we are glad to have that behind us and we are anxious to, uh, receive those scores back so we can continue to look for ways to improve and, uh, to celebrate our successes. Uh, but with that, I did want to point out a couple of things. We'll be meeting with principals next week, uh, during a principals meeting. Now that state testing is done, to look specifically at the second year of our third grade retention law. Um, and making sure that we are preparing families in schools, so they can work with families on the different pathways to fourth grade. Of course, our first, um, objective is going to make sure that every student who needs to move goes to summer school. So we'll be doing letters, all calls, individual calls, as test adding in third grade come back to get students in third grade. If they don't do summer school, we do have other pathway options, but that is by far the one that we are recommending to families is third grade. Also, if you watch the, any of the legislative updates, you will know that this year, we were also subject to the fourth grade promotion pathway for students who were promoted in third grade last year. The law was very clear. There was one pathway and one pathway only and that was they had to make adequate growth in fourth grade to be promoted to fifth grade. We had it right around three hundred students that applied to. Um, of course, one of our main concerns is we didn't even know what adequate growth was until February. Um, and working with our families on that, I am proud to say that a bill did come out the general assembly and I did not check right before, I'm not sure if it's been signed by the governor yet, but I think the, in, like, indication is it will be signed if it hasn't signed. That has opened up some additional pathways for those fourth grade students. Um, and our Senator White was, um, from here and our, one of our representatives was, uh, one of the sponsors of that legislation. So we appreciate that. But what the new legislation says is that if one of those three hundred third graders we had in our district, if they did not make adequate growth, that if the parents, the principal and the teacher felt like they would be successful in fifth grade with tutoring, they could be promoted as long as the, they received tutoring in their fifth grade year.
Oh.
So we are, um, we are excited, we are very glad to see that pathway option that's been available. So part of the work we'll be doing is not only meeting with principals, but next week, I believe Ms. Trail will be start sending out information to families about Zoom calls for third and fourth grade. We will have district meetings, make sure our parents are well aware of what those pathways are. We were very successful last year in getting ninety-nine point two percent of our students from third to fourth grade with the supports in place. And our goal is to be just successful with that, with for, uh, fourth graders going to fifth. So again, wanted to update you on that, uh, change to the law.
Little question.
Mr. Moore?
So the tests that the kids just took, that will be pertinent for this year's third graders.
Absolutely.
And fourth graders.
That's right.
Will we get numbers? But I'm assuming that the, the outreach you're doing now with parents is kind of based on what the year, you know, benchmark testing is, that you're looking at that. But will we actually, when do we get the actual test results?
So our, for our third grade students that are subject to the third grade retention law, we will have that, I believe the date is May twentieth, is that correct? That we will have raw data, just raw data, not performance levels, back for just those students on May twentieth, which is the Monday of our last week of school. So we have, we were working on it yesterday. We have really beginning next week, a day by day guide of what we have to get accomplished each day to make sure we get touch base with parents and they have it. So that week, uh, on Monday, we will get that information back. Dr. George will start compiling it from schools. There is a retest option. So on Wednesday and Thursday, we will be doing retests and then Friday, the students leave for summer and then we will start contacting parents. We'll get the retest scores back the next week.
Okay.
And then that week, our school administrators will be contacting parents to let them know, hey, if you're not in summer school, we need you to enroll in summer school. The fourth grade data is a little different because it's based on value added and adequate growth. And again, it's just a subset of fourth graders, uh, but we won't get that data back until July one. So we are working now with this law change to have some proactive conversations with families to say, you know, depending on if your child meets the adequate growth benchmark, what is the pathway for fifth grade so we can be as prepared as possible? We do not want to wait until July to tell parents what next year looks like. One, for the parents, most importantly, so they know, and then two, so we can plan appropriately. So we're trying to do a lot of that work here and plan for multiple contingencies. Um, but the state will not prom, they're telling us we will not get that data back until July first. So we will have lots of conversations with those families. I will say, you know, that July first, because it's value added data, that's really earlier than we've gotten it before. So I think they are rushing, but they just cannot produce those scores as quickly as they can, the third grade scores.
Thank you.
Hmm.
Mr. Dodd?
When are we getting the other scores back? Did they say?
Uh, like all of our data, that starts rolling in usually right around the end of July is when that starts rolling in. The achievement scores, then value added scores usually come in, um, a little later than that in the fall.
Okay, so we don't get any of the other scores until July?
That's correct. The only data the state will send us, um, before, they'll send us raw scores, which again, don't tell us a whole lot, but they do give us enough information to let us know if we think a third grader will be.
Okay, when do the, when do we get the raw scores?
That'll be on May twentieth, just for third grade. Um, and I'm not sure.
What about everybody else?
No share. When do we get the raw scores? I think it's a few days, it's usually early June at the latest.
Okay. That's a lot of pressure on those kiddos.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
A lot of pressure.
And our teachers do a great job of keeping it, you know, focused on, uh, just doing their best on the assessment and not making it high stakes. And, uh, I really do feel like the changes to the legislation have been good changes to help kind of lower those stakes a little bit.
And allow more people to sit at the table.
Absolutely.
Make those decisions.
And that's what I wanted to say, Mr. Chairman, because, uh, I want to say thank you to our legislators, uh, for listening, um, especially on those changes. I'm proud to know that our senator from this area, a former school teacher, which she will let you know, um, uh, stepped in and did something to relieve some of that pressure. And they woke to the fact that, um, teachers, principals really do know best for their students.
Parents.
Parents, yeah, absolutely, know how their students can achieve and to every parent, myself having been one, um, it, it becomes such pressure to think that your child is gonna be judged on a couple of days or one day of a test or whatever, uh, and that there's no other hope. So I'm, I'm grateful that the kinks, I guess I'll say, are getting worked out in this law and it's maybe won't be as, you know, hairy as it originally was. Now, if I can help the governor to drop this whole voucher scheme, uh, we'll all be doing better and I won't have to make any more speeches or preaches about that.
A lot of, I think the proof is in the pudding and the pudding is not done yet.
Not at all.
All right, anything else to come for this board? I thought the other night, Excellence Education case was wonderful. Uh, I think Senator Womack or Andy Womack made a wonderful tribute.
Mm-hmm.
Jerry, and to all teachers.
Mm-hmm.
In fact, and I think it was very well received. His comments were, I thought, very appropriate to every educator in this system.
And Mr. Chairman, briefly if I may, um, I've said it many times and I believe it bears repeating. As, uh, Dr. Duke goes to present the budget to city council, I want to thank Mayor McFarland, Vice Mayor Shackleton, the city council for being such great partners and advocates for city schools. It really matters. So thank you very much for what you do for us.
If I can say, I'm sorry, one more announcement. Uh, I should have put this at the beginning, but, uh, Ms. Trail mentioned that next week is Teacher Appreciation Week, next Wednesday is National School Nurses Day and this Friday is National School Lunch Hero Day. So we want to thank all of our cafeteria workers. And I always, so my favorite, I, I do a lot of school visits and my favorite place to be is in a school cafeteria cuz that's where you really find out the truth of what's going on, is it a school cafeteria and those kids are fantastic and they want, yeah. Uh, I, I would tell people my favorite question, I never go in a school cafeteria, I don't get the question of how tall are you every time I go. But it's my favorite place to be and that's because of our cafeteria workers that do such a good job of, of paying care of our kids. So we're excited to celebrate School Lunch Hero Day on Friday.
That's why a good principal, if he knows his worth, that's one of the first groups he makes good friends with, is cafeteria staff.
Yes.
And the custodians. All right, anything else come for this board tonight? Thanks again for a wonderful meeting.
Yes.
Have a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you. Have a second?
Second.
We adjourned. We adjourned.